All right, it is eight o'clock, so if we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the meeting to order and any one for public comment at this time? Seeing none, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yes, any public comment?
Come right up and what have you got on your mind?
Supervisors, my name is Justin Foss, I work for Alliance Energy, I've been with the company for about fifteen years. This is not the first time I've been in front of the county supervisors. Back when we built our last two wind farms in the county, I was here and interfaced directly with the supervisors and explained about how our company has a strong say due relationship where we act in best faith for ourselves, our customers, and landlords that we work around in the communities that we serve and we have a strong track record of doing that. Since we built those two wind farms, we've provided here to this Cassuth County in the last two years about a million dollars in tax revenue and that million dollars is only going to increase here in the next several years as we go on. Over the last ten years, it's been about two and a half million dollars. So in the last two years, that tax revenue that Alliance Energy provides to Cassuth County is really ramping up and we're going to see that get larger over the next thirty years. I'm here today because we're trying to advance projects to, in order to build a battery up in the northern part of the county, near Buffalo Center where our largest wind farm is. And we are trying to urgently respond to growing, rapidly growing demand on our system and the overall power grid as a whole. And so I, we have a proposal that we'd like to speak with you at some point when you're ready to take it on your agenda and to speak with the planning and zoning. We were there last week to have a conversation with them and the planning and zoning commission said that they needed direction from the supervisors before they were able to grant us a special use permit for the project. I recognize that I'm not on the agenda today, so I just wanted to say a couple of words here in the public comment, but I would be here after the meeting as well to answer any questions that you have. Because we're really, like I said, trying to advance this so we can stay ahead of need on our growing power grid here in the state. So it's just, I wanted to provide that for you and let you know that I'm here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda and minutes from November fourth. Motion by actor, second by house. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Road Foreman, good morning. Anything exciting going on in the secondary road department?
Just trying to catch up. But a big fall so far, getting a lot of stuff done as well.
Yep.
Longer will snow stay. We did, everyone ran pavements, sat in the afternoon, so we did get a little bit of a... Taking some slow showers. Reminder that...
Stuck pretty good in places, yes.
Monday morning we went out and just did a little touch up here and there, weren't a few spots it froze on. Today, trying to get some gravel roads, get them maintained and continue to... Be prepared for snow, but we still have a few projects, so we got it on our list. We hope that we can get done before the weather does not allow us to do anything more, so.
I can't believe that I have...
Well, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, KRHC update. Good morning.
Good morning, we're happy to be here. So, one of the things I want to talk about is space planning. We're looking at the current space needs at Cassuth Regional Health Center. It's a little bit like playing musical chairs right now. As we think about where our services lie and the growth in some of the services, we've really tried to maximize the use of the space that we have within the facility. To that end, over the last few years, we've transitioned some space. We've taken our previous health information department and we've turned that into durable medical equipment and that really has met an important need within the community and it's, it's really done very well for us. We also transitioned a couple of conference rooms and we transitioned those into senior life solutions. Again, meeting an unmet need in our community and that has gone over very well. It's, it's been a successful program. We're now at the point where we're making some other transitions. So nuclear medicine, for example, we are in the process of transitioning that to a mobile service. And having a mobile service, because of the way that, that particular service line operates, will actually allow us growth in the future that we probably wouldn't have available by having our own fix site camera. What potentiated that change was that our camera went down and isn't repairable. And so as we started looking at the financial implications of replacing that versus going with a mobile service, it just makes, made sense for us as we look toward the future for that. That opened up that space though and it allowed us to move echocardiograms into that. And by moving echocardiograms, it opened up that space and allowed us to create, which we're currently doing, a space for patients who are waiting to get into the emergency room but need to be triaged privately because we can't get them in right away. You see that our VR volumes continue to grow, so, you know, like I said, it's looking a lot like, like musical chairs. One of the things we're looking at now is moving MRI in-house and we've got a space that we think will be appropriate for that. But the growth in our lab has just been astronomical. We do over a hundred thousand lab procedures a year and we don't have room. And so to make that fit, I would like to entertain a discussion with the board of supervisors at some future date about the EMS building, because that would be a good place for us strategically to move lab into. So, just a heads up and I would ask for some time to work with either a couple of us or all of yous at once, you know, to start, start that discussion, so. Let me think about that.
Very good, yeah. We, we will have that discussion.
Sounds great. We also just had our most successful ever legacy mall. That's the biggest premier fundraiser for the foundation. As you know, it raised a little over a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and four thousand, which is just unbelievable. So nice support from the community, we're grateful for that.
So talking about meeting needs for the community, we have also just recently this summer brought on pain management services at the hospital. And so we have a CRNA, Jacob Miller, who is coming in two to three times a week and he is offering pain management consults as well as procedures to help people with, obviously, unmanaged pain. So it's also been extremely successful. Initially, he started out with one day a week and already we've grown to two to three days a week, so that's the demand for it.
Just our, our first couple months at the fiscal year have been go, go, going well. A lot, a lot, lot that due to similar to what Dar and Stephanie said. Pain, pains services have really ta, ta, taken off. Our MRIs, our x-rays, all of those things, we just continue to see numbers that we haven't seen before. So we're very lucky that so many people choose us for their, for their care. This, this time of year, our ship volunteers are in their busiest time of the year. So that's our senior health insurance pro, pro, program. And that's a group of vol, of volunteers who help Medicare beneficiaries choose the right plan for them. So they really do a great job trying, trying to save folks mu, mu, money. And they really do a good job ed, ed, educating the difference on traditional Medicare versus Medicare advan, advan, advantage. We continue to see a rise in our advan, advantage plans, similar to every, every, everywhere else. And really, we know that pay, pay, uh, pay, pay patients see delays in care when they have that plan. That for, for us, it's a lot of, of work on our end to even get a service approved to get, to get done. So we really appreciate that group of vol, of vol, vol, volunteers for their work on that. And they really, you know, let them know, not, not only the Medicare advan, 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 advantage plans that we don't accept, but if they were to get care elsewhere. So Mayo Clin, 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 Clinic this next year will not be accepting most plans. So while we may a, a, accept a plan, if they ever get tran, get transferred out, they, they may not be accepted there. So it's a really big, big deal for a lot of that age group. So we just continue to try and work with them and hope that they receive the care that they can, so.
We currently have six active ship volunteers and those six volunteers, last year provided, I'm peeking around the corner, provided more service than any other community in the state of Iowa. That's significant when you think about it. We know that geographically our county is large, but we know population wise, you know, we're certainly not as large as the, the metro area is, so that is huge. It's a great program. What questions you have, Chris?
Financials are welcome.
Yeah.
I was just going to ask, what was the scope of the ship people? Is it just people in Sioux County or do you take anybody that walks in or calls in or...
They take anybody that walks in or calls in. Actually, I don't think you can just walk in and, you know, maybe you can, but they have such a tight schedule. They see so many people, but they do take people who just call in. We know that some of our surrounding communities or counties have, currently do not have an active ship volunteer program and so aren't able to provide that service.
Thanks.
Great question.
Any other questions?
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, appreciate you being here.
Yes.
Nice to see you.
I'll let you, Carter, would you reach out to me?
Yes, regarding, regarding, yes, our EMS facility there.
Yes, thank you.
Yep, we can do that.
How great that you guys...
Yeah, you too. We have transfers made by the Cassuth County auditor to, from general basic to secondary road, the amount of twenty-six thousand eight hundred fifty dollars and eighty cents. And from rural basic to secondary road in the amount of a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars, a hundred ninety-seven, a hundred and three dollars and seventy-six cents, made on November sixth. We'll let the record reflect that those are acknowledged. Next, we have an update from the planning and zoning administrator, Corey's sick today, apparently. So I asked Tammy if he could please be on the agenda for next week rather than wait another month. We've got some things we really need to discuss. Mr. Foss's comments this morning is, is one of those things. And that, that's one of the other major things. So we've got some things that we need to visit with Corey about. So he will be on the agenda next week. Discussion, decision, potential acquisition of real estate pertaining to the Cassuth County fairgrounds. Scott, behind the pole, okay, Scott, you want to move a little closer so we can sure all, all see you, hear you?
No, much I love this, right?
So Scott had sent an email to us here a couple of weeks ago regarding prices for the, for the grandstands as the project was being... Some, some updates to the project there and wanted to update the board and see what our thoughts were and wanted to be on the agenda for that, so. Just go ahead if you have any comments, Scott.
Just wasn't sure, yeah, how big we wanted to build it, but we wanted to, I was going to kind of get your thoughts on that.
And what's this first page showing, Chris?
Well, they didn't print very good, to be honest with you, but that's the stuff we did the other day with them. That, that's going to be the new concession stand that we're going to get done this year. So we're going to have the concession stand done this year, we can't do the grandstands till next. And that's, the first page is the inside of grandstands.
You're building the concession stand currently?
Yeah, we're going to do that this year. We got to show, we're doing something. Me and the grandstand's kind of on hold for the minute, so.
Sure.
Yeah, so we went over these yesterday with, with the terrain, I mean, the plans look good. I, I was, I was impressed with the way it all come together. So we're planning on getting that done before race season next year. And I guess that's just kind of the start of it there, just kind of shows the outline of it, but... Basically, we're seeing kind of what you guys had ideas for sizes of the grandstand. I think we had the three different ones. And then your ideas on the ground down below.
So the concessions, is it totally, is the totally separate building?
Yeah, can be totally separate, yeah. The one that's sitting there now is underneath the grandstand, we're going to move it sideways and then kind of integrate it in there so that, you know, like, I like the way when you walk into Alabama's football, where you walk right in and you're right on, right there, and that's kind of what we're looking at. So we want to get that done this year, it'll be, it'll kind of be the entrance of public grandstand.
So you have ticket sales there too?
Yep, there'll be ticket sales, plus there'll be all the food sales, the beer sales. Everything will be, it's kind of what we do in the same building now, except we're just kind of flipping around and turning it. And I think that...
Is that going to be bathrooms with it or just...
We're going to keep the bathrooms. I was, yeah, the bathrooms are sitting right beside it, you see the one picture?
I see the building, but are they going to be redone?
They're going to be redone, yeah.
Okay.
This year?
I, uh, yeah. It'd be nice if it'd be done before the season starts, yeah. I was wanting to move them underneath and I kind of got outvoted on that. And after looking at this, I think that is a good way, the, the way they sit, sit in there right now, to just leave them where they are and just redo what we have.
And the structure's quite fine, it just maybe...
Yeah, structure's real good, just needs some updating inside.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that structure's not that old.
No, no. But, yeah, we're planning on having all that done, like I said, before springtime next year for this, this coming year, so.
And the engineering firm likes this?
Yep. Well, as long as we're tearing down the grandstand, they're all happy, so. That was the main hurdle in the whole thing.
Okay.
Yeah. And the good thing with having it outside is, I didn't realize, but if you cook food underneath where people sit, then you got a bunch more codes you got to control if you have stuff underneath.
True.
Yeah, so having it outside, not underneath the grandstand will, will be a benefit.
Understandable, yeah.
That's just going to be our first step, so.
I should probably know the answer to this and probably it is going to come across as an extremely stupid question. But other than you come to us for money, I've, I've heard in previous, you know, eight or ten months that basically there is no connection between the fairgrounds and the board supervisor.
Not really.
So why do you keep coming to us with this stuff?
The ground down below.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, it's kind of the, the bottom line of most of this.
Okay.
And I did, I did visit with Don and then this, so for public knowledge, Don's wanting this to be a public conversation and for people to understand what he's proposing to the board and the fair, board of supervisors and the fair board. And Don is wanting to make a three million dollar donation to the fairgrounds project with this forty, forty-one acres on the south side of the fairgrounds along Highway one sixty-nine. And he would like the board of supervisors to match those funds and basically have a whole revamping of the fairgrounds and that piece of property in connection...
Hook everything together.
Hook everything together, first of all being finishing the grandstand project is, is why this pertains to that acquisition of real estate.
Kind of started the whole...
Right, that's what, that's why we're having this discussion.
So the, so this discussion is now leaning more towards your phase two?
If we get all this put together, then yeah, phase two will all come together. But to me, this is more about the ground down below and, and...
Right, but has the conversation changed that the money requested by the board to match, can that go to phase two or does it have to go to the, the new land down below?
What else do they...
Yes, that's my big question, I want to know that.
Don, most of Don's money would go for down below and your money would go for phase two and the grandstand, but everything up top, basically. That's the way I understand it.
Okay.
It would be, it would be a both and. I mean, when we're talking about the existing fairgrounds and the, and the donated land. And, and Don's words here, in summary, both parties agree that the county shall invest, he's talking about board supervisors, on the Teets property, which is, he's including the grandstands and things in that, at least four million dollars for improvements, which is equal to Don's contribution. He's getting the four million dollar number there because of his million dollar tax.
What he says for the land.
Credit for the land is what he's proposing.
And I think he was talking over a ten-year period, correct?
Over a ten-year period, yeah. So there's the, there's the discussion of, you, you didn't know where you were going with the grandstands.
Right.
And so how do you have the discussion on other things? You know, it's all tied together, so.
If we get that put together with that down there and up here, then we can pretty much do whatever you want with the grandstand.
And, and really, that's, that's why the board needs concrete, this is the plan.
Yeah, and that's what I was waiting for, to see what you guys wanted for the size, basically.
And then we can decide, is this something we want to be a part of or not?
And we haven't got any concrete numbers on our phase two yet.
Right.
But yeah, it's all in the, the pamphlet that we did, you know, for the, the different phases that we have planned. We got a lot of big plans for the fairgrounds, we just hope we can get it all done and, yeah.
And I hope I, and I hope with this being a public conversation here that I hear from members of the public.
Yeah.
And what are solutions, what are thoughts?
Get some input.
I mean, it'd be good to have public input on this, positive or negative.
Yeah, and we're not going to stop raising money. You know, we've raised, what, one point three million for the grandstand already. Actually, we have more interest in the phase two, since we're in the, you know, more agriculture community. I don't think phase two's going to be any problem raising money for that.
No.
So, I mean, we're...
And phase two aligns more with the ways the, the board, their contributions as to facilities for the county fair and for age. And that lines more, that lines more with what our, any of our contributions should go towards.
Yeah, yeah.
For educational and youth.
Yes, yeah, that's where our money aligns.
That's what this is all about, so.
Yeah, so. Well, what discussion do you want to have today? What do you want from us today?
Oh, that's kind of you guys, you guys got to, I mean, this is going to be a big thing with the ground down below and figuring it all out, so.
I'm not asking you, I'm asking this group, why are we debating the size of the grandstand?
I, well, I, I know that we had a dis, well, no, I can't say that. Never mind, it was closed session, I'm sorry. We discussed that in closed session.
Yeah.
Let's discuss it in open session. Why are we debating the size of the grandstand?
I'd like, I guess I'd like some input, you know, I, I was going to downsize it and, you know, there was some discussion on that maybe we shouldn't do that. So I guess I was just looking for some input from you guys on it.
Why don't you start by telling us what was the highest number of people you had at the, at an event at the grandstand?
That was the, the race of Veterans Night and I believe that was around seventeen, eighteen hundred. So yeah, if we went with a fifteen hundred grandstand, we're going to be a little tight. If we went with a two thousand, that's the one right in the middle, I would think would be plenty good. If you wanted to go bigger, go twenty-five, it would be set up for concerts. So we want to, we want to make the grandstand for different stuff. It can't just be for racing and for fair, I mean, we're, we got all that ground there, we need to do more things down there.
Try to make money?
Yeah, make money, we do a lot of stuff. AMU wanted to have their party down there this year, I mean, we've done stuff for the YMCA, I mean, any stuff around here. We're wide open for anything down there.
For public benefit, what's the current size of the grandstand?
I think it's twenty-two, yeah.
Twenty-two hundred?
I think so, yeah.
I think, I think the main thing the board needs to decide is, the grandstand's certainly a part of the discussion with the main thing is, what do we do with Don's proposal with the acquisition of real estate? Is that something we're interested in participating in or not? The grandstand is still there and is still going to happen?
I believe that was a contingency of the offer.
That, that's a contingency of the offer, so that's, but, but I'm, I'm talking about our involvement in it.
Well, I believe that we need to have a very open conversation about our finances to make that decision.
Right.
So...
And that's not going to be a this year decision, because that would have to come from TIF revenue if you're going to fund something like that.
Well, and, and like I said, we can't, we have to have the conversation about the finances and we have to have stuff in front of us as to where we're at in our funds, in our TIF, everything before. I mean, that needs to happen.
Right.
I mean, I, I won't, I'm just being honest, although it's very, it is a extremely great offer. We have to make a good decision based on our finances.
Absolutely.
And if we can afford it and doing the best for the outcome, so. When can we have that conversation?
We can have that conversation anytime on what we want to do with our TIF revenue moving forward. That would be the conversation.
When will you have what the TIF looks like for next year?
That's what we were waiting to see what numbers came in so far this year.
So, um, you should know what numbers came in this year already, but... Yeah, yeah, we'll know, we know that, so.
Was it five hundred something?
I don't know.
Okay.
She probably wasn't prepared to...
No, that's fine, that's fine, I don't blame her, that's fine.
But when will you have the... But when will you have the TIF stuff done for the valuation process, so that we'll know what that's looking like for next year? By the end of the month, consumers will have to approve it by December first, so.
Yeah, I was just thinking that same thing, we have to have, probably we'll need new debt before December first.
Well, you're not gonna be able to certify new debt now, cuz you don't have time.
With the notification date and everything?
Cuz it's November.
November twelve.
Are you able to find whatever current outstanding debt would be?
Yeah.
Eventually?
Yeah, I know what it, I mean, I just have to look it up, but. Do you, do you have those reconciliations, so maybe we can see the reconciliation, TIF reconciliation we do each every year? And if we look at that, that will be helpful. But we need to look at that financial side of it, we, I mean, that's very important. I mean, I don't wanna tell you how big, how big to build your grandstands, but my opinion is if you're gonna go with fifteen hundred people and your highest event has been seventeen, eighteen hundred people.
And we should go a little bit big.
What are you gonna do with those people?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, good, that's something I didn't think about, so yeah, that is good, so.
Is, does this design, I guess, with either size, cuz the different numbers is more rose up, right?
Yeah, yeah, they go, they go up, they don't go wider.
Yeah.
Yeah, it must be higher.
Is there room for more on the south side yet for?
Yeah.
Extra sets of leachers in the future?
South side or even the north side, on the other side of the vacuums, could be in there, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
And of course, the sooner we decide and we can lock in for prices and everything else too, they, they, they said they kinda like, if we get something done by the end of the year, you know, that would be good, but. So.
Have you had any substantial conversations with other donors yet with the news of?
I tell you, most of my guys are all out in field, so I'm kind of a one-man band right now the past month and a half, so ain't had a whole lot of help, but.
Add some I'd probably recommend.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, we're, we're not slowing down on that, we still got a list of people, every Monday we have a meeting.
Even the ones that donated already for thoughts.
Yeah, and that's something we have to put out anyways, because we was planning on doing this this year.
Yeah.
And with the problems we had with the, the grandstand guy and the bit in the roof and all that, I mean, now we gotta put it off till next, so we need to throw out some kind of statement saying we're gonna do this next year now, but.
Well, very good, I think that's the next thing is have the.
You, you want a public input. I wanna make sure the public understands what's proposed here. You can recap it, or I can try to recap it, or whatever you want to do.
I've got it, I've got it right here, if you want me to read it. That would be, then everyone's on the same page. From Don Teets, I would like to clarify my proposal to the supervisors of Cassuth County and the Fair Board. I will give Cassuth County forty-one acres south of the Fairgrounds, provided I get a Form eighty-two, eighty-three from the IRS in the amount of one million dollars. In twenty-twenty-four, a comparable dollar amount was made on Highway eighteen for eight point four four acres. I pledge to Cassuth County the sum of cash and the amount of three million dollars payable, three hundred thousand dollars a year for ten years to begin March tenth, twenty-twenty-seven. In return, the Board of Supervisors shall do the following. Repair the grandstand consistent with the plan Austin Peale has provided at the county's expense. Shall provide a general development plan for the entire existing fairground land, plus the forty-one acres I proposed to pledge. This plan shall meet approval of all the parties involved, including the Donald Teets Charitable Foundation Board. County shall match Don's pledge of four million dollars, this four million dollars will be spent on the development of the forty-one acres. As a precatory request, the county shall work with the Conservation Board for use of the lower land along the river on the forty-one acres. Don will get naming rights on the forty-one acres. If the Schipler House can be bought reasonably, it'd be worked into general development plan, this needs to be discussed for other options. All parties agree to establish a timeline for the development of the properties that is agreeable to all. In summary, both parties agree that the county shall invest on the Teets property at least four million dollars for improvements, which is equal to Don's contribution. Don Teets. Letter to the board. So we will, we'll have the TIF conversation next and see where we're at. That's on.
Well, I just wanted everybody to know what they're talking about, and that's, all that's contingent on the grandstand being agreed to and done, or whatever.
Correct.
Four millions after the grandstand's done, or is that included in?
That's, that's all.
Four million's going south of the grandstand, there's no one, none of that four million dollars is going into the current Fairgrounds, is the way I heard.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that.
Well, that's the way it sounds.
That's the way I would read it, yeah.
And I think it was said earlier that it could be anywhere, I think that's a clarification that I have not heard before.
That's the way I, that's the way I understood it too. For what he's wanting to build down there, if he sticks with the same plan, I mean, two, three million to cover. So the rest could be used up on the top or, you know, for the rest of the Fairgrounds.
That might be something to clarify.
Yeah.
I don't know if that has been clarified so far.
That should probably be clarified before we go much further.
Should be clarified, absolutely.
Yeah.
This is what Don wanted me to read for the public.
So I feel you guys' money should stay for phase one, phase two, and his should go down below. That's kinda the way I understood it, but.
Okay. We'll clarify that and have the TIF conversation next.
Okay.
Thanks Scott for.
Let me know when you'll need me to come back in.
Sorry, I.
No, go ahead, Howard.
I think, you know, as far as the size of the grandstand, I don't have an opinion, but I think that it's out there in the public, you should get enough info or enough back
Yeah.
from the public, you shouldn't, you shouldn't wait for us to tell you how big to build the grandstand, that's my opinion, if you don't have to agree with that, that's, that's my opinion.
Okay, noted.
I'm sure you'll get opinions.
Oh yeah, got plenty of that, okay.
Okay.
Howard, when you need me next time?
Yep, thanks Scott. Hey, good morning Doug.
Good morning.
Here up to approval for gravel pit agricultural land leases?
Yes, um. I don't know if it was last week, the week before, but they did receive some bids for farming some of the agricultural areas and some of our gravel pits, so. Todd Schneider, he has, has returned his lease to us, so I need a motion from the Board of Supervisors to approve of that three-year lease with Todd. So that would begin March one of twenty-twenty-six and end March one of twenty-twenty-nine. And this is for the cylinder pit.
Did we just have one, did we just have one set on that, or multiple?
There were three, I believe, on that.
It was two or, it was two or three weeks ago when we talked about it.
Yes.
Need a motion?
I'll make that one.
Motion by Haas.
Approved.
To approve.
Second.
Second by Garmin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the lease, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried.
And then Katie Patton, this would be for the, what we call the Hutchins Pit. She was a high bidder on that particular pit, so we need the same for that.
Your motion to that effect, approved, motion by Stecker.
I'll second.
Second by Wactor. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried.
Not too much.
Huh?
Not too much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Need construction in the right of way?
Uh, we do have a request, this is from ITC Midwest with some of the construction that is being completed, they are removing some of their overhead facilities, they're doing a lot of work underground. They submitted to us a request to remove some overhead lines. One is on three hundred tenth street, right to the east of fiftieth avenue. And then there's on three hundred tenth street, right to the west of sixty avenue. Again, I believe it's twenty, it's three hundred tenth street, this would be on the east and the west side of seventy avenue, right side of Low Rock. Previous ones were a little bit east, about a mile east of those two. And then there's, this would be in Plum Creek Township. Uh, there's a line right north of two hundred eighty street along one thirty avenue. And then out to the east of Algonah on one forty avenue, right to the north of US eighteen. There's these stretches here, I would recommend that the board would approve of, of these requests, so they can continue their work.
So be in one motion?
Yes.
Can we get a motion to approve the right of way work, motion by Stecker, second by Garmin? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, discussion?
I'll get these signatures.
Oh sure.
Uh, last week, I did not have Rodney Jensen's, the board acted on it, but I need your approval on that one. Carter and, and if you'll sign right there, please. Right at the bottom. On the, on the left hand, your left hand.
Oh, here we go, I'm sorry.
And then that's Rodney, so was acting on last week.
Yep, very good. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, um. We have open positions in Algonah, Lakota Shop, we're receiving applications for the Lakota Shop and advertising, or excuse me, receiving applications for the Lakota Shop advertising, just starting to advertise for the Algonah Shop, so we're gonna get those filled soon. Working on some locations for the engine braking ordinance, to put some locations in there, so we'll be getting that to the board on the agenda. Then, I was asked the end of last week to start reviewing a road agreement for battery storage project up at the Golden Plains Project, which was discussed a little bit this morning. I don't, typically, these road agreements are approved by the Board of Supervisors. Uh, this is pretty minimal construction activity, they'd like to get some concrete poured, some foundations for their batteries up there. Amounts to about twenty-five yards of concrete. The opportunity to really damage a road with twenty-five yards of concrete is pretty minimal. However, they would like to have a road agreement. So I need some direction from the Board of Supervisors. Uh, my understanding is the board of adjustment did not, or denied the special use permit that was being considered. And, and I don't know how to move forward on this. So I guess next week, when Cory is here, we, we can discuss it more, but I do plan on getting some sort of road agreement put together for that, so that if construction does move forward, we can react to it quickly. So, I don't know what, i- if the board can give me direction or anything like that.
Is this road agreement similar to the one with Winter, where there's videoing beforehand and then?
That would be.
Okay, I was assuming that was the same structure.
It's a, it's to one location, not multiple locations. Right now, we're dealing with twenty-five yards of concrete, which go on gravel roads, twenty-five yards of concrete, no.
Yeah.
For our road system, so.
Yeah, and I was, I mean, I was less concerned about the cubic yards of concrete or any of that, just the structure of the agreement.
So I do need that, and then with our secondary road labor agreement that we've had with our secondary road collective bargaining unit, we've had that for many, many years. The road department is no longer being represented by a, a union, so they will then fall under the guidance of the handbook. Uh, there's a lot of specific information in the contract, I'm starting to put some information together, and I need, I will ask the board whether they want to continue practices of the contract with the road department, or if they wanna go just with, with the handbook. Couple of examples, four-day work weeks during the summer, forty-two hours of compensatory time, forty-two hours per year of compensatory time, that's different than what the what the handbook is. There's just some things that need to be taken care of, specifics that will allow our employees in the secondary road department to know what is going on, as well as myself, so I can, it can be administered.
When would that date change as far as what terms they fall under, would that?
July one of twenty-twenty-six.
I just wondered.
Are you gonna come with recommendations?
I'm gonna, yes, I will. I will come with a list of what I see as differences, definitely what I would like to see continued, so, yes.
This was the last year of their wages on that.
That's correct.
So, okay.
And then we do have a safety meeting scheduled for the twenty-first of November, beginning at eight o'clock at the Nature Center, so if any of the board would like to attend that, you're welcome.
What's the date again?
November twenty-one, Friday, a week from this Friday.
I do love it, you're the movie.
I must be, I must be talking too much, so.
You're making it weird.
So.
Is that at eight o'clock then?
Yes, that's correct. And then Waste Management, we have a comprehensive plan meeting on the fifteenth. Yes.
December.
Fifteenth of September. Keep on thinking. Yeah, that'll be at seven and it'll be I'll have a teams meeting set up, so people can join remotely. Yes.
Do you have any other questions for Doug?
Will you be here this morning after the meeting? I have a few things I talked about.
Absolutely. Sure.
Very good. Thank you much.
Very good. Everybody have a good day.
Yeah, you too. I guess discussion with the county auditor next.
Okay, so next week, we have approval of the appointment of Anne Gale to the civil service commission to replace Bob Christian. His term is expiring. And we have the second tier canvas for the city school election. And that is all I have. Christie and I will be gone next Thursday and Friday for real estate conference. We are doing, we have conducted interviews for the drainage clerk position. We are doing second interviews tomorrow. And so we have some good candidates, so we're very excited about that. So, that's coming along. I do have a note. We'll be setting up our compensation board meeting here in the next few weeks.
Already that time?
It is already that time. And then I have a note to discuss longevity after that is done, so we'll be putting that back on the agenda probably at the beginning of December, so. Those are things that are coming up there, and I think that's all I have.
How many second interviews are you doing?
We are doing three. So, possibly four, but right now, three for sure.
Very good. Howard, any meeting or any news?
Okay.
Kyle? Kyle wants big agendas the next few weeks.
Have at her.
Yeah. John?
The board directors meeting was Monday night. Fortunately, I wasn't able to make it, so it's kind of awkward. But they did go over some of the financials and implemented an updated drug and alcohol policy, which I have copies of here, so if you guys want to look at the, the financials and the policy. I have it right here.
Board of directors of what?
Nikon.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Other than that, I did not have any other meetings.
Okay. I had no meetings either. Light week, I guess, so.
That Drainage District Association meeting is, is December fifth. I have a direct conflict with that. Somebody gonna, I don't know if he'll be back or not.
Well, yeah, I will probably be.
Kyle, is that something the new drainage clerk, if they're able to start by then, should be attending as well?
Yeah, that'd be, absolutely, if possible.
Okay.
And, and yeah, that'd be a good thing to make note of for your discussion and your second interviews.
Yeah. Well, I think we have to register by December first for that. I do have a registration form here, so.
Can you sign me up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, we had, well, we had talked about scheduling a C I D C meeting for that to kind of split the difference between our November one and December with the holidays, and then we settled for that during our meeting and realized after the fact that I D P A was the same one, so now I D eight, the fifth, and then the twelfth will have C I D C, which I did. We did do interviews for the executive director position. We should be able to move forward with that at our next meeting, I guess. Based on, but yeah, things are going good there.
If anybody else wants me to sign them up for that drainage meeting, let me know.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you. Okay. Oh, we can do a couple of items before now.
Yeah, we can do the other ones, but
Not the hearing.
Quick break before we get into drainage, if we can.
That's fine.
Yeah. We have to turn this one before we can move to the canvas, so we can get through everything under the canvas.
Right, right.
Yep. Yeah, we'll have to do the canvas stuff really.
Yeah.
Five-ish minute break?
Five-ish minutes, so we can come back and get rolling on drainage.
Yep.
Warren? Are you? A little odd walking in here.
Yesterday was the odd day.
Yeah, it's, you know, I, there were a couple of different phone calls I made, and I was thinking, that's strange, no one's and no one's picking up. Three o'clock in the afternoon, I was like but of course.
And I recognized that it was better today, so I let a person walk the mailbox.
Yeah. But it's
Yeah. It, from being busy to very busy is kind of where we, kind of where we live. You know, different things fall at different times as far as construction and yeah, right. It's, it naturally staggers itself a little bit.
No, I don't know it's natural.
Right. It's gosh, there's a, there's a lot going on and it seems like fewer and fewer people doing it all the time and it's we're we're sticking with it. We got got at least one new hire confirmed for the Algonah office here for next year, so that'll be hopeful about kind of bolstering members from the, from the back end. What we're really still seeing from from the COVID and this stuff, just the retirement age, that, that people hung it up and filling those numbers back down. And that, that's what's driving that adaptiveness that we're going to have, so.
Okay, we are all back, and we'll go ahead with drainage. First off, we've got a report from Bolton and Mank for D forty-five drainage outlet review. Morning Tyler.
Good morning. Start with forty-five. Okay, yes, we can do that one. There was a petition filed for the review of the outlet of Drainage District number forty-five. Forty-five is a two main district on the, the existing plants. It outlets into a natural creek that flows to the Blue Earth River. There was some questions about the some construction, so a private crossing and a wetland that had been constructed downstream of those tile outlets on that natural channel. We were appointed to that petition to go and review that outlet. That was done. We went out, we took survey shots on the out, the two tile outlets, as well as the private crossing and the wetland downstream of, of all of that. I have reported on that in the, the letter report that had been submitted going over now. I'll go over what those, those findings were. The outlets for D forty-five is a thirty-six inch CMP corrugated metal pipe. The, it, the elevation, the outlet of that was at one thousand one hundred thirty-nine point three four feet. And there was next to it, with the two main system, a twenty-four inch corrugated metal pipe that had an elevation of eleven forty point six nine. The stream elevation directly downstream of that, the outfall, was at about a third of a foot below the thirty-six inch, so eleven thirty-nine point oh five. The first obstacle in, I shouldn't say obstacle, the first requested review was on the private crossing that was approximately twelve hundred feet downstream of those outlets. That was three twenty-four inch pipes that were all at approximately an elevation of eleven thirty-six point eight eight. So, little over two feet in elevation difference there. Representing an average grade from the outlets to that structure of zero point one eight percent, which is pretty good for a ditch in this in this area. A lot of times you see those at around a ten. The private crossing had approximately a foot of cover over top of those pipes. I'll jump ahead a little bit to the conclusions, just go with those one at a time. Utilizing the, the recommended drainage flow for open channels, the anticipated high water flow over the the private crossing was eleven thirty-nine point four seven feet, so within a tenth of what the outlet of the thirty-six is on that district. There was also then the review of the wetlands downstream. That was another seventeen hundred feet downstream from the private crossing. For the record, at the time of our investigation, the control structure, the pipe through the structure, the berm of that wetland had already been removed. It was lying next to the to the, the existing pool, and there was a pretty noticeable channel through that water could get through. And water was going through at a trickle at that time, so it was, from, from my observation, there was not, had not been a significant change in water level from the removal of that pipe to the, the time that we were investigating. There had not been enough, there, there was a pretty sandy soil condition. There had not been a noticeable amount of, of cut or, or rushed flow through that. But, that all being said, the elevation of the channel through that, that berm was at eleven thirty-four point one four feet. The top of the berm was at eleven thirty-nine point oh three feet. Meaning that the grade between the, the private crossing and that outlet was zero point one six percent. And the top of the berm and the ditch elevation at the outfall of the thirty-six inch pipe were comparable. Essentially meaning that, and it, it doesn't work this way. In theory, there's a lag when water moves through a system, but if you were to have said that that, that wetland was as full as it could have ever been, when water started going over the, the top of that structure, it would have started doing that in kind with where you were going to start seeing any inundation on that thirty-six, any backing up into that thirty-six inch pipe. And that's just taking into consideration that it's a straight line system, that you don't have, we didn't extensively model the amount of storage that would be in the low lying ground around that channel. So, ultimately, with those grades and the, the elevations that we found, I don't deem that either one of those were obstructions or had been causing restrictions in the anticipated flows out of the Drainage District. Now, that being said, all of these systems are old. The, the channels that were, were once emptied The the channels that were were once emptied into, they wind. There's there's natural growth that happens. The tiles themselves age and slow. We're seeing a lot of that. The capacities of them that are often calculated are idyllic. Those are the best case conditions, not accounting for any sort of siltation or disjointing, changes in in size based on damage, cracking, crushing. So that is all to say that I'm not surprised if there's being seen a diminished drainage efficiency in that district or really any other. However, again, not attributing this to any of those items that we reviewed. We also didn't look at the the overall capacity of the district, not what we were asked to do. There are opportunities for the district to, if it desires to explore the maintenance of its outlet downstream. But that does not come without its own difficulties. There are provisions in the code that would allow a district to maintain and do work, essentially improve its outlet. Of course, that requires additional hearings. It requires the purchase of, purchase and acquisition of right of way on that system, something that the district would not at this time have. It takes time, it takes takes money to do that. But it is things that the that the district could do in pursuit of additional water flows. If there is a thought that portions of this year or large portions of last year should be used for anticipated rainfall events, that is something else that should be reconsidered. There have been, and I don't think I'm telling any secrets here, it seems to in recent years have been a shift in storm intensities, the the time between those storm events. And those are, those are getting larger, they're getting closer together. And we go between periods of of intense rainfall into almost back to drought conditions. So as far as comparisons to those events to typical or even the design events for these systems is is inappropriate. That shouldn't be done. So I say all that just for context of potentially where this petition was coming from. The easiest place always, of course, to look is at the outlets and make your determinations. I'm not saying that the petition was wrong in doing that. However, again, we've looked at that and I can't point to anything or say to anyone downstream or or back the the district in requiring that any additional above and beyond removals get made. So that's, any questions? Any questions on that?
No. My only question would be, just because of the two places where, you know, I went and read it. It, could there be any, due to the overgrowth? And could that be potentially ampering anything?
I, again, I don't doubt that based on the the naturalness of that creek, the the water will, water will wind based based on channels and how they flow, the center's being deeper and the outside's being shallower. There's a change in speed that caused, that's what causes the serpentine motions of ditches. Over time, they'll, they will, because of that serpentine, it will slow. And then water, very much like electricity, will find the the easiest route through. It's just getting pulled by gravity. So then that's where you get oxbows that get cut through. The water speeds back up and then it winds again. If you look at the old, and really any natural river system, you see the throughout time. So the efficiency of that system will increase and decrease with time. And the amount of vegetation, the the roughness essentially of that stream does play a part and largely in a reductive sense. So I don't doubt that there's something to that. But it's not something that, because it's not a district facility, it's not something that the district could have or should have been upkeeping. And it's not something that the downstream landowners had an obligation to uphold or correct. Similar to a lot of our, a lot of our river systems, right? You can look down from about any bridge and there's down trees, there's debris, there's just different things that that hold water up. But it's a natural creek, it's a natural river system. No one is is really under any sort of district obligation to do anything to remove that. But I don't doubt that from the time that this district was installed to now, that channel is not in the the same condition that it was. It is likely more wild than it had been. That's the nature of, that's the nature of it. So, and that's why I outlined in in the write-up that there are things that can be done. I've I've seen additional right of way acquired. I've seen district channels be established. There's for permitting purposes, there's oftentimes, it's it's far easier to go to what a repaired status would be rather than being able to go in and straighten and significantly improve the capacity of that that system, just with the the creeks and things. So you can, you could improve from where it is, but improve beyond what the anticipated original conditions were is is more difficult. That takes more more permitting. Oftentimes talks of mitigation, which when you're talking in stream length mitigation is is considerably more difficult than wetland mitigation because of the available spaces and credits to offset that. So there's a path, there's there's almost always a way. But it is, it is a significant process to to look downstream. So that's.
Do you have any questions?
Well, I think our biggest question was the overflow pipes were only like twenty inches or so.
Uh, the, in in the wetland, the.
The dam.
Right, yeah, that was.
But it's removed now, it makes a whole different ballgame. But even the channel is restrictive because there's fifty inches of pipe coming in, fifty-four inches of pipe coming in and only a small channel to go out. At the end there. That was our concern.
Okay. Well, yeah, and again, that.
Well, the same thing probably at the the crossing there. You said three twenty-four inch pipes?
The three twenty-fours.
That's not the same as a thirty and a twenty-four.
It's, it's not, you're right, but with the.
Restrictive is what we're trying to, trying to say.
Right. The the cover between those pipes and the cover over the top of them and looking at the drainage flows, it isn't, it isn't a restriction to your free outlet of the thirty-six. And certainly not with the twenty-four. Water will sooner pass over it than it will restrict your your flows. And then everything after that, it's already, it's already over the top, right? And and in a similar way with the pool, you would have seen that the wetland fill up. It was by design with the the two twenty-fours that leave out of it. But it has a lower channel around it even than before it it got to the top of that elevation.
But when those pipes do wash out over the years, that's when you see better flow.
A better, better flows in the, you would see it in the the lower flows that those channels were were carrying. But as far as the flows that would have inundated your district pipes, there's, there would have likely been little change.
Well, it's enough to be noticeable because the rest of the district is built on pretty low coefficients, so.
And I don't, I don't doubt that.
It'd give us much flow as we can get, you know.
Right. Well, at at any rate, the pond's pipe, the the pond will no longer serve as any sort of restriction.
We thought probably over the years it's silted into.
And I there's, there's likely silt that's accumulated in there. However, whether it had been silt or it had been water sitting in there, they act the same, right? They're both taking up the same storage area. And I know that pond has been silted completely shut because there was still water in it. If if it had silted up to those outlets, it would have just, any water in would have would have gone out. So.
And the upstream further than the pond.
Right, exactly. So just because of those, the survey, the observations and everything that's going on now, I don't think that there's really a big call to action of anything for the district to do other than keep your eye on it. And I don't mean by going onto people's properties or anything like that. I mean.
That's why we, that's why we came here.
Right. I think for now, with what has been done and the information we have, my recommendation would be to observe.
Any other questions or comments?
Anything more?
I have a question. So based on results, even if the pond would have been, said factoring in with the elevations that it is, based on this results, if I'm reading it correctly, it would have just overflowed into our pasture. There's no chance that that, you know, all the way up into the pipes a half mile to the start of the water stream is, correct? It would have been.
It 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 would have been very difficult for, it would have been very difficult for it to have done that.
So I think that, even with recommendations of watching it, you have to understand that, that it's very difficult, even if it overflowed into our pasture, to have gone a half mile back upstream to the east to to affect the drainage in your district. My next question is, is what are you doing in the district to look at issues that you might have in the district for over timing or sizier main or sizier pipes? Have you done a drainage coefficient? Are you willing to do that to check so that you know that it's not an issue?
We know it's poor. We know it's poor. It's been proven years ago. When we were there though, looking at the first time with Anover, the thirty inch pipe was sitting about almost half full of water and it wasn't moving. So what does that tell you? I mean, that's what we were interested in.
Right.
Now that it's dried up, of course it's empty, but that's a whole different story.
Right.
It's for a natural stream.
Right. And I, and I would, I would attribute that more to, just from these elevations, I'd attribute that more to the the just capacity of that natural stream rather than anything that was in its way. And and there was considerable amount of water earlier, earlier this year. When when we were there, there was, you know, that thirty-six is never likely ever going to sit completely dry. There was a few inches of water in it even at that, even at the time that we investigated. But it was something that, just with the mud boots on, we were able to jump down and get the elevations on. So. I, again, I don't doubt for a second that there are drainage efficiency issues in that system. It's just not those two things that I can point to directly and say that they are the contributing factors from from the elevation information that we got.
We're just concerned about the flow more than the elevation because the speed is what keeps it clean and also what drains our ponds.
Right. And the the drainage efficiency is what is, it's dictated by those elevations. That's what, that's why we took those elevations is that, and I agree, the three twenty-fours there that in larger events on that private crossing doesn't keep up. You you can stand on top of it and see the scouring that happens when it goes over it. But the ability for the water to go over it is what then increases the flow backup. And it does that at an elevation that's lower than what the out, the pipe outlet is. Any drainage concerns between those two points, like water is likely moving very slow through that because it's a natural creek. And because it has winds and it has vegetation, it has potentially downed tree limbs, just different things like that. But as far as the it it wasn't a failing of the districts and it wasn't a failing of landowners, it's just how the system is set up.
Tyler, was the elevation from point, starting point and point five feet of long?
Uh, it's it's something like that, yeah, approximately. The the grade between the outfall pipe and the the lowest of the district facilities was about a zero point one seven percent, which is on a, on a ditch in this area where where the standard is right around a ten. So you're almost at, you're at seventy percent over that that grade.
When you were talking before, you talked about the natural factors largely being reducing factors. Is there any way to quantify how those would reduce capacity when we're talking grade that's above normal for open ditches, but the.
There is, there are, there are, and and this is really where you would get more into. It would, that that would be something that I would, you would look into, were you interested in doing more work in that channel? There there would be a way of quantifying it, but what it depends on is your cross sectional area of of the channel and a a roughness coefficient. There are different tested empirical roughness friction factors that can be applied to those channels between whether or not it was a maintained ditch or something that was a a natural creek. The the difference there on friction factors can be twenty-five percent to fifty percent additional as far as what your flow capacities are, just based on, again, that that roughness factor, whether or not it's deemed smooth and uniform or something that's more obstructed, wild and rougher. At at any rate, again, the wetland has been taken out of the equation. That.
What the, what is that, a natural waterway? Is that subject to any different laws or?
It it is. It would be, well, it's not necessarily different laws, but governing bodies. It it would be overseen by the the Iowa DNR and the Army Corps of Engineers. To do anything to it would require permission from those two agencies. And and we've, we've done that, but they've set pretty stringent requirements as far as where you can go, where you can put spoil materials, when you can do the work. There's, there's just different stipulations on that. just different stipulations on that. And the district would also then have to obtain the right to be in that ground via a, a right of way. Hearing and acquisition. There's a, a separate report. There are appraisers involved to make sure that there's a fair market value placed on that right of way. So there's, there are, there are the two agencies and then the drainage district processes that would be required to do that.
So can it be cleaned or anything like that?
That, well, that again would require going through those.
For all the, lots of trees and stuff.
Right, and, and you'd still need to acquire the right of way. You'd still need the, the permission from the DNR, Corps of Engineers, um.
I think there's only a ten percent if they want to go to move. So there's only a ten percent removal rate too. You can't go in and just dredge it.
Right, yeah, there, there are, there are requirements as far, that's what I'm saying. They, they are very stringent on the allowable amount of change.
Really doesn't need that, but if there's obstacles would be the only, you know?
Right. And that, that I think you would have the permission to do from those agencies a lot freer. That would then be working with the, the downstream landowners to, to coordinate that. Would be my recommendation. It wouldn't be to do anything necessarily formal. It would be to, you could go in and take anything dead or dying down and out of there. Um, it's just, I think you, you'd get it done a lot faster and a lot cheaper just working it out privately.
Which was our intent at the beginning of this.
Well, at, at any rate, I consider this a, maybe not the best of ways of doing it, but a bringing together of people for those conversations. And I'm not, I, I want to be very, I've been talking to everybody all along on all of this. Um, my involvement and my report, I want used in no way of, of pointing the fingers at anyone for, for anyone's actions. It was, it's, it's data. It's, it was used to do calculations and beyond that, it, it shouldn't be used, so. That, that is my final conclusion on that.
So I guess I would say if anyone from the district wants to do anything else, then that's a separate discussion from today.
It would, yes. It would require additional permits or additional requests essentially of the district to go further. And that would need to then, like Todd said, be done outside of today.
Can we get a copy of your report?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes. Now that it is on file, um, the, I'd, I'd happily take people's contact information.
How many copies do you guys want?
Or yeah, if there's.
It's only a two page letter.
I can email it to you too.
We'll get those to you.
I was gonna say, it sounds like they.
If you print them right now.
Yeah, we'll get them to you.
I have them, um.
All right, and do you want to roll into our next?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, we're, we can move on to, do we want to just make a motion to approve the drainage repair request quick?
It's up to Amber.
Oh, I don't care.
Since, since that's next on the agenda.
Well, it's whatever you guys want to do. I'm fine if you want to.
Let's just, let's just do that real quick so it's done. Um, do you want to read them or?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I just got a couple of copies of those.
Yep.
Uh, request number one oh one, drainage district one oh eight of Maine, section four of Bird Township northwest to the southwest. Um, Steve Sherland has signed the request. Broken tile, um, with a big hole near the curb. Um, he thought it had been previously fixed but having issues again. Maybe that's that one. And then request number, uh, one oh two, drainage district eight six. Um, it's original texture, um, between intake and, I'm sorry, section eighteen of Buffalo Township, between intake and a hundred yards is back, back fill. From digging by in the intake when they fix the tile. Okay, so, um, and it says this request is for Chris Wessel, but signed by original.
Okay.
Motion.
Motion by Stacker to approve. Second by Whacter. Discussion at all. Hearing that all in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we are well past nine AM, so a discussion decision for public hearing. I need a motion to open the public hearing for DD twenty. Tile improvement, motion by Whacter, second by Stacker. Discussion. Uh, roll call vote please.
Pass.
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Whacter?
Yes.
Nan?
Yes. Public hearing is open. And go ahead Tyler.
All right, thank you. It's good morning all. And I don't know if I introduced myself earlier. I'm Tyler Conley, professional engineer that was, uh, appointed to the, uh, improvement petition for, you guys refer. For the, yeah, you bet. One more right there. For the petition for improvements to the outlet of the South Main, what I'll call the South Main system of drainage district number twenty. This drains into the Union Slough, part of drainage district number eighty. The portion I, I have displayed here, all of DD twenty, both north and south main systems. The outlet that we are talking about is the portion on the, uh, south main of that system. And the tentatively associated watershed of that. Little difficult to see up here, but that's the red line on here. Black lines represent the tile facilities. Again, the portion of it that we're looking at is essentially from the, uh, the property lines to the open channel operated by the Union Slough. This is, this portion of the district's almost directly east of Bancroft by about three miles. So there was a review done of the existing conditions of that district facility. Again, it's a little hard to see, but it's essentially the, between sixty and eighty feet from the, the property line where there is a junction box where district facilities and private facilities come into, and they join into one pipe that outlets into that channel. The, let's see here. The existing pipe outlet and the open channel is a thirty-six inch corrugated metal pipe, uh, assumed to be twenty feet in length. That's the, the typical length of those. And then the remaining forty feet is, uh, assumed to be from the end in the junction box to be a thirty-six inch, uh, dual wall black plastic. The flow line, the grade between the flow line and, uh, the, the junction box and the outlet uh, is calculated at two point four percent. There's quite a bit of fall from that property line into the channel. Um, that portion of district is approximately one thousand eight hundred and thirty-five acres. Used to calculate the, uh, approximate drainage coefficient for that portion of the, uh, system to be zero point six inches per day. Drainage coefficient is the rate at which water can be removed from the entirety of that serviced area in one day's time. So if you have a half inch drainage coefficient, a half inch of water could be removed from that landscape by that facility in one day's time. This is slightly over that at a zero point six inches per day. The recommended drainage coefficient for, uh, areas, and this is coming from Iowa State, for areas with good surface relief is a half inch drainage coefficient, uh, up to as much as an inch drainage coefficient for areas that are more, um, pop old. The capacity of the system was modeled a, a number of different ways to show the, the comparisons. And then on the second page of the report in the table, the, the areas, the, the line that is folded is the one that's the most applicable to the system. There are largely two, uh, equations used for gravity flows. One's the Manning's equation, the other is the Bernoulli's equation. In this instance, because of the submerged nature of the outlet into the open ditch and that it is at the outlet and unlikely to ever truly flow full, which is what better Manning's equation calculates, Bernoulli's was selected. Bernoulli's uses more of a, uh, elevation difference and, um, uh, pressure coefficients for how it drains. Ultimately, because that system is submerged and you're, you're dealing with the necking of the flow at the outlet, there is from the idyllic total flow amount a reduction as is shown on the, on the table. But that is the explanation for why a, the zero point six or, or the, the true calculated value zero point six three was settled on for that capacity. That was compared to the upstream coefficient of the drainage district facility. That facility, we don't have records, the district does not have records of where the private tiles are, what their grades are, or all, excuse me, or all the areas that they serve. So based on the district records, the history, the best that we can, we utilize the, and calculate the drainage coefficients off of those original, um, conditions, the original, uh, design documents. The drainage coefficient for that portion of the South Main facilities was approximately zero point two inches per day. Essentially, uh, at or less than a quarter inch drainage coefficient, which is not rare. That is around the original design capacities between, uh, a quarter inch and three eighths inches what was typically designed at for those original system, uh, conditions. I am confident with the amount of piping that comes into that box that that coefficient is likely larger than that. The ground is likely being drained better than that. But if it is to the standard of a half inch drainage coefficient would be difficult. Uh, half inch or greater would be difficult to say. Um, the petition calls for the examination of what would, the conditions that would be required to get the one inch drainage coefficient into the channel. And this was the examination of replacement of the, the tile lines to get that capacity as opposed to looking downstream at, uh, making any changes to the channel to reduce the amount of, of water in that channel. In my discussions with the representations at the Union Slough, they've made it, uh, made it known that because this is a drainage district, they would be agreeable and allowing in improvements to the facilities of the district, meaning from the, the piping facilities from the fence line to the ditch. They would not entertain any additional constructions or changes to that ditch or to that channel. So, looking at what would be needed for that size, the, to get the one inch drainage coefficient, um, it would require that the existing thirty-six inch plastic be replaced with forty-two inch pipe and the metal outlet pipe be replaced with a forty-eight inch, uh, CMP. That's typical to upsize the plastic then fit over top of the, uh, the, essentially the carrier pipe. And, uh, makes for a better outlet into the, the channel. The reason for that, uh, the, the scaling other than that is that with the corrugations of the metal, it has a lower flow rate based on its roughness than the smooth interior of either a plastic pipe or a concrete pipe. So that is the, the difference there. That the amounts and, uh, the amounts to do that for the cost estimate were worked up. That would also require either retrofitting or replacement of the control structure, the box structure at the fence line, which we have as an expense of three thousand dollars, but could be, um, could be considerably more than that. If it could not be retrofit to fit the, the size of pipe in there, the replacement of those, um, I, I've seen from fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. So there's, there's, I would say quite a, a margin of error in the cost estimate. And ultimately, the, the reasoning I'll give behind that is because a project of this magnitude, of this small scale is, in my opinion, you are going to see an inefficiency in the, the price that you would get for any of that work being done. The, like most things, there is an economy of scale with these projects. And to gain the one inch drainage coefficient or any improvement on this segment of tile, I think it, you would be better off waiting until there was desire or a larger, um, consideration for improvements upstream when it could be done all as one package project. You get one contractor there, you have larger quantities of the same type of material, you get a better price on those things. But because there was a petition, it required an answer. This letter report serves as that answer. There are, of course, additional considerations for improvement projects. Anytime that a district desires to move or there's an inquiry into moving more water than was originally designed, the code, uh, Iowa code chapter four sixty-eight, the section of the code that deals with the governing of drainage districts, deems that that is a different, it's a functionally different project than a repair. A repair would move the same amount of water and improvement moves more than the original design. Because of that, because of that fundamental change, there is, uh, been additional considerations that go along with that. The first that's noted in the report is that with improvements, it is most often deemed that farmed wetlands upstream between the FSA and the NRCS office, there is a high likelihood that any farmed wetlands would be considered mitigated or, or, uh, converted and required mitigation. Uh, so as far as any wetlands known out there, it would be important for landowners to know about them and know about the potential impacts that an improvement project would have. Because that is not something that inherently the district is responsible for. Because that is not something that inherently the district is responsible for. The district is not required or obligated to pay for any of that mitigation costs. Those are, the costs and the potential penalties are borne by those landowners. So the more the owners know, the more they can share with the district about those potential impacts, the better, the better everyone is in knowing the potential outcomes of a, of an improvement project. Second, improvement projects are not mandatory. Repair projects are mandatory. Damages to systems are required to be fixed by code. Improvements are not. And as such, they can be halted with a process known as remonstrance. That is that if at the hearing, which we are at today, that a decision should be made by the close of this hearing on what to do, that close does not have to be today. This hearing could be continued for decision-making purposes. But if at the hearing, a majority of owners by count who own seventy percent of land by area object to the project, it holds it in place. It ends and it stops it right there. Those objections have to be in writing and they have to be signed. They do not have to go into any further depth than that. The third, consider, third and last consideration for improvements is that the code deems with improvements that are of a certain size when compared to the original assessment schedule. When a certain amount of money is spent by comparison in pursuit of an improvement, the code deems that the benefits that everyone in the system receive from that are inherently different than the original assessments. Meaning that everyone's benefit in that and what they pay for it is different or would be different based on a new assessment schedule when compared to the old or the existing schedule. Those have seen significant changes from the original methodology of reclassification to how it is done. Now, the aim of those is that those that benefit the most from an improvement project are those that then pay the most on that improvement project. Oftentimes, you'll find the highest benefit at the landowner that is the closest to the upstream end of that facility because they are the most readily improved by it. And they are the ones that with that most readily improved, they have the greatest access, they use the most of it. In something like this, it's on main, everyone pays. But you would see it most immediately at that fence line before you saw it up through the rest of the system. Also then, landowners in any project are eligible for damages, reimbursement for anything that is damaged as far as standing crops or loss of future yields if there's construction done when crops aren't there. And then also for, for any sort of project, for areas where there may be buffer strips or anything that is in a government program, CRPs, anything like that. That again, projects can be done through CRPs during, even during nesting seasons, but that takes permissions from, from the overseeing agencies. And that is something that the landowners are also responsible for. Anything with those, anything with CRPs, anything with wetlands, all of that information is protected under the Privacy Act. The district does not have any way of knowing or gaining access to any of that information that isn't readily shared with it. So that's just again another disclaimer on decisions that the districts make that could impact landowners, that the district would have no way of knowing prior to making those decisions unless the landowner made, made those issues known to the district. So, that is a rundown of the report in response to the petition for improvement. Are there any questions from anyone at this point?
Yeah.
Could you point out to the crowd, we're assessed DD eighty lap two. Could you show them where that's located on the map there?
So I believe that to be on the east end. I didn't, I didn't look into, I wasn't asked to look into anything about eighty.
That's fine.
But, but I do know that the slough is on the maps part of Drainage District eighty. And this obviously drains into Drainage District eight. I'm assuming that either one of those laterals is one of the ditches that flows either north or south.
Very extent of this slough.
Out, out of this, out of this slough.
The very extent.
Okay.
And I have the fence. Okay, so we have a right, it'll clear the center of the slough as we're being assessed and that drainage. Now you're saying that that current outlet is submerged. You just had to talk about that GD one point five, that one's not even submerged. This one here restricted because of it's submerged, is that correct?
It, it is.
Water above the pipe.
Well, it's not, there is, it's, by submerged outlet, I mean that at the time that we looked at it, it had, it was about half full of water. I, it was not, I, I mean it's, by submerged, I mean anything other than free flowing. The water was not simply flowing out of the end of the pipe. It was not underwater. It, it had.
It had water back.
It had water, it had water halfway up the pipe.
Yeah, there you go.
So because of that, it's, we, we, that's what drove the decisions on what equation to use when calculating the capacity.
We're, I'm just saying, and just like that other district, their pipes are free. They don't have any. We have water sitting in this pipe.
There's also, there was, in my opinion, quite a considerable amount of grade given up. These calculations for what would be needed there assume that you don't utilize any of that, any of that lost grade. One of the things that would be difficult about using any of that lost grade is that the, the cover through the the Union Slough ground is minimal. So as far as trying to, trying to pitch this pipe up to gain a freer outlet, you start to daylight sooner, you, your pipe comes up and out of the ground. So as opposed to doing that, the calculations are used assuming the same, the same grade and upsizing those pipes so that you have a bigger cross-sectional area out into, out into the channel. Looking at what was possible and what was going to be permissible from the, from the Union Slough, essentially from the federal government's standpoint. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, so I, I won't comment on any sort of legal standing.
But at this point, right now, they wouldn't allow us to improve that.
Not the, not the channel. The pipes, yes, the channel, no.
And if we were taking off the district, that this would be the time to do it because we're in the district, we're being assessed. And you can't guarantee that it's going to be cheaper later on with inflation and everything. You can't guarantee that.
Oh well, and, and nothing that I've proposed here proposes taking this area off of eighty.
Right, they did that late in three.
The, 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 the report here looks at improving the capacity from the box structure at the, at the property line to the, to the channel. It doesn't recommend any sort of changes or looking at the, what is and isn't benefited by eighty. And to the degree that you aren't benefited by eighty.
See, we remember a lot to do this before. They reclassified and forced in the district just a couple of years ago. Who can even look at things like this? And the school would say you may have to sit in court and ask.
We're, we're wasting our time talking about a hundred years of drainage.
The, 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 where it stands right now, improvements would be allowed to the district facilities, to the pipes. The, the channel itself, though it is within Drainage District eighty, isn't from anything I can tell a governed facility. So anything essentially from that outlet upstream could be done and improved. We have the blessing of the slough to do that. Based on district desires is what would be done. I'm not here to sell any project, I'm indifferent to any of it. It, it comes down to trustee decisions on what's in the best interest of the district with input from the, from the lands. I am of the opinion that, you're right, I can't guarantee that anything would be cheaper, but I think if you compared doing this work to doing this same work at a later date with a larger tile improvement, you'd likely be money ahead. If that day never comes where you've looked at a greater improvement upstream of that, then you're right, you probably could have gotten it done cheaper now to go to the one inch. But my argument about doing that is if you're not going to look at the larger improvements upstream, to push the one inch drainage coefficient further up into the district, why do you need an extra? It would, it wouldn't be a realized improvement until you took that capacity deeper into the, into the district.
So it's not an improvement, it's a repair, you said.
No.
Not at all, when you said.
No, it's still an improvement, it's just a, a hyper-localized improvement. You would still be increasing your capacity, but the benefit that you, the realized benefit would be small. And I think you're going to have inflated construction costs because we're not looking at the magnitude of thousands of feet of pipe. We're looking at double-digit feet of pipe. I mean, at best, you're looking at probably eighty feet of pipe. A hundred if you stretch it and you're talking about making reconnections if you needed to redo a box structure, which.
And that's not figured into your prices here.
Right.
I think you could easily double or triple a cost estimate on construction side things.
It's, it's possible depending on, on the amount of, if you, getting into the, getting into the box structure and the, the more modern reinforced box structures are awfully hard to cut into. They've got steel reinforcing in them, trying to, and are you getting the best product if you just try to knock a bigger hole into an existing, an existing structure? There are, there are certainly things that weigh into this because of its small scale that wouldn't be there on a, on a larger project. My, that's my, that's my professional opinion on it.
Does anyone else from the district have any thoughts or comments about the current capacity of the outlet?
Not really the capacity, but so why does the tile to the north have to pay for this one to the south? When we have no water going into the South Main. But we're getting assessed for this project too. And when we did our project up north, we had to go into the slough and get permission to put in. Nobody from the south paid for anything to happen in the north, so why?
So that's, that's part of the reclass.
Some from us, but we don't get nothing from them.
So that's part of the reclassification that Tyler touched on earlier. And I think that would be, I guess in my opinion, that would be something that I think we would have to do if we did this. I mean, I, I wouldn't support it any other way because that benefit should be specific to the lands that it's serving. But also, that would enter, that would in, that would include a lot of, in my opinion, wasted engineering if you're doing a classification schedule just for sixty, eighty, a hundred feet of pipe.
Right, I agree.
When the district facilities are already more than substantially served on a numbers perspective by the landowner.
Well, you look at the classifications, they're not classified on that pipe at all. So the auditor's office sent the wrong notices out. It's pretty typical of the office to make a mistake on that.
You can keep your comments professional, Joe.
There, I was just saying.
The fact that you look at the classification, he's not on it. Now, he's not on it now, so why did you notify him?
Either way, we, I would still say we should be looking at a reclassification if we're doing any sort of improvement right now.
I was, I was gonna say, there is a separate standing, as far as, as far as I remember looking at, there is a separate schedule that applies just to this south, just to this southern main, the southern portion. If there had been any sort of additional notification, it is, it was done as a precaution based on the, based on the preliminary review of the watershed that we put together that we found the drain to that point for those calculations. If anyone was over notified on the, the schedules, it was as a precaution. I'd rather more people know about it and then the opposite, right? More people know and then less people potentially pay when it all shakes out rather than we leave somebody off and then we're expecting them to pay and they haven't been, been notified.
Yeah.
Ultimately, when it all comes right down to it, any project that's done for improvements that increase the amount of water, that change the benefits, it is only those that benefit from it that pay. Everyone else that split how water goes, there is a, there is a pretty meticulous process. There's reports, there's commissioners, there's calculations. There's a lot of engineering time that goes into that that makes those changes. There's another hearing involved, landowners get to plead their case, they can object, they can submit other information. It is a lot of a process to make sure that that gets done as right as it could be done. And I support Kyle in saying it would be an awful lot of work to do for a, even if you triple that amount, it would be an awful lot to do even for a seventy-five thousand dollar project.
I have all the classifications, I need to know the ones that are affected on this deal. It's main two and three. Main one stands on its own, then they got a new one, main four.
Right, and those ones wouldn't be, those ones wouldn't be looked to for, for payment or?
Got notified, he shouldn't have never been notified. He's not affected. I got all the schedules, I know who's on them. And I called everybody to run this history.
Well, I, I attempted to explain why we, we over notified, that's, that's the situation there.
And you just want to.
Joe, that's been explained.
Say no, we don't want it because he's not on it. That's what you did. Don't give him this bull, you guys got it all set up, you don't know.
If you can't keep it professional, leave, period. That's it.
I'm just stating the facts.
No, you're not.
You don't like to look at the facts.
You're making assumptions and making comments that are. You're making assumptions and making comments that are completely false. No. Are there any other...
Any comments from any other landowners?
Is there anyone who feels a improved outlet is needed in the scope of the project we're talking about right now?
I believe it is. That way you're ready to go. If they ever decide an improvement on the other side of the fence. We've never been able to do this before. Till you guys reclassified, spent a hundred thousand dollars on everything.
Are there, what?
None.
Any other landowners' opinions? Howard, go ahead.
I can look at the map and see what lists the landowners. I can't, I don't know who's, I don't know the people that are here. I wanna do what the landowners want, want to do. But I don't know who of you here are, are representing the district that are not. But if you don't wanna do it and you're, and you're in this, you need to, you need to let us know. If you do wanna do it and you're in this, you do need to let us know. We need to make, we have no agenda personally as to what happens here. We want what you want, or I think that's what we want.
And Tammy, Chris, have there been any formal objections filed? So that's for the, for the record. There, there hasn't been anything objecting to it.
Yeah, I think one of the differences...
This is the first time we've really heard exactly what's happening.
And that's...
Because we're here.
Right.
And, and that is a difference over some of the other improvement projects that we've done recently. We tried to have more focus on informational meetings ahead of time with the scope of this. We didn't do it because it was such a limited scope. But I do think if we have any intention of moving forward with this, I think we should continue the hearing and have another one. And also have the discussion about, um, a reclassification because this should be updated. We have a lot of things that have not been reclassified and I think this one, with the scope of the project, we should be looking at all those details.
With a continuance for, for the record, if a date and time is set today, additional notice isn't required to the landowners. If at a later date that is to be set, then re-notification is needed. Um, for, for that reason, there, and there's, there would be ways to get additional information out to people. We're mouth travels pretty quick, quickly on these things, especially now that some of the information's been disseminated. Um, my recommendation would be if there's a desire to continue, which I think is, is warranted, a date and time be set today for what that continuance would be.
My opinion is I don't think you should go ahead and reclassify this unless you're talking a big whole new main. Not this little bit that we're talking in the SLU. I don't think, it doesn't justify doing reclassification of that. But if you're talking miles, big main, new mains, then I think the reclassification would be justified.
But you, this is a question, this is not a statement, this is a question. I wanna make sure everybody understands. If we improve this, it's an improvement and we have to reclassify, is that correct?
There's, I'd have to look at what the original assessment was, but with as small as those amounts typically had been, uh, the code does have a threshold as far as what, um, I think it's, if you, if you're doing a project that's over twenty-five percent of the original assessment cost, you're obligated to reclassify. So there's, I agree that the process...
Sure.
But as far as what the...
It doesn't matter what we agree to.
Right, it, it matters what the, what the actual code states.
And I think all those questions need to be answered before we would move forward with anything.
Well, do we want a motion to close?
I went and talked to the SLU manager and he said all they had to do is get the approval from Kyle. He was the one that tried to talk him into never putting a pipe in.
That's not the case.
That's what he did, he said spend a whole bunch of money on a new main or something.
He said you would need approval from the district, not from me personally.
No, he said we needed approval.
Doesn't matter what he said. He, he's not the governing body here either.
We have rules, we have...
Care what one guy sitting in Union SLU said.
Do we want a motion to close and make a decision following here? Or I'm sorry, a motion to continue and then, and then, uh, I didn't mean to say close. Motion to continue and, and set a date and time from there?
I don't know about setting a date today, maybe good into the future. But I think even if we do that, I think we should notify again just for extra communication, even if it's not required by law. Um, I think the more knowledge about the project, the better.
So how does, how does the law dovetail? You're, I don't, I'm not pointing fingers, but you're right now, you're outside of the district and theoretically would have no say. But if it, but if it got, if it happened and it got reclassified and then he's within the district, he's gonna get assessed. Is that right?
There, there has been, and, and that's a, a bit of the process, yes, that the remonstrance rights extend to those in the district to be benefited. So you have to first be in the district and then have to be benefited by the, the project. We do run into instances where people will be in the assessed area, but they are not currently on any sort of decision-making schedule. In the, 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 the way it's been explained to me, the thought behind it, the reason that that is the decision that was made is that the code is set so that those that have been paying and benefiting from the systems the longest are the ones that get to decide what happens to the facilities moving forward. And they, that it stops a larger benefited area from a larger project being able to come in and essentially swamp the project shut. Um, in instances where we have been looking at what those larger areas, some in favor of and some in favor against, there's been the review of the watershed and the consideration of annexation prior to that. I think with some refinement on the, looking at the potential benefited area against what the assessment schedule is, a lot of that could be mediated, a lot of that could, could potentially go away. Again, a lot of the, a lot of the, having someone here that isn't on the schedule was a precaution, not an indication.
I, I don't know if that was really an error because I think it would get into your farm in section fifteen, there is a portion.
I don't own that, I'm talking about the section, it's, it's...
North, right, right.
Further north.
Right about three eight.
Is that what you got to notify?
Up here. Cause this is my, this is my mother's down here, I have nothing to do with that.
Did the notice come in her name or yours?
My name.
Okay. Well, I mean, it, it could have been as much as a sliver in the bottom east of that corner that you might have been on the schedule for, I don't know.
And that's, I'm just curious, I know.
Yeah.
Right, and, and it's things like that, that on this scale, the refinement of the reviews on everything, it, it's, this isn't the first time I've seen this happen, but, um... That, does that, does that answer your...
So, so potentially, I, I think, potentially, you, a decision could be made that could affect you that you have no input to today.
Correct.
You'll have input in the future if you get reclassified. If it, if the pri, if the district is reclassified and then you're in. It's just kinda...
Correct, it, it's, it's the order of operations.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, yeah.
And, and reclassification is the financial side of that? Annexation would be the process that would actually bring your ground into the district, but they go with it.
Right. Annexation I've described as the light switch on and off, in or out. The reclass is to what degree?
Yeah.
But, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, it was, the reclassification would determine whether there needed to be an annexation.
It all, it all in a way chases it's fail.
Yeah, they were, they were together.
It, it's iterative and as you look at it more, it refines and that spiral tightens. This is a, for what it is worth, this is a, a unique situation that is not, as far as improvements are concerned, not outside the realm of an understanding. I get the concept of being prepped and ready. We're seeing a lot more inch improvements. This one seems to be perched right at the, a difficult point between what all the statutes require, that being the reports, potential reclassifications, how it gets assessed. It, it's, it is a very, very unique situation that seems to, even though it's relatively small, be just large enough to tip the scales for everything that's, that's needed. And, and for that reason, it's what's making it difficult for me to, to say that the, the costs incurred on this would be worth the benefits gained. Because in the event that a larger tile improvement goes further than that, the classification that's done on this little segment does not hold true for that larger portion. You're not out the review of the benefits and the change when that is done. So you, you in essence redouble your efforts in that for being prepared for it now. Right? Because we, we tell you what the increased benefit for this little portion is, we haven't told you what the increased benefit for a larger improvement would be. If you did them all at the same time, they become one thing. Those improvement benefit changes can be told at one time as opposed to twice.
Which is cheaper and a lot easier to understand by all parties involved.
Yes.
In all fairness, you know, there is, by me, this is nothing official, this is my opinion. There's a, I have a notion that someday, you know, they may not let you improve an outlet. And, and so, so in all fairness, there would be some benefit to getting that now. I understand that, what, do you agree with that, Joe?
Yeah, that, that's the only reason I...
Yeah, right, I understand that, understand that. You know, you got an opportunity, uh, but, uh, but we need to hear from, I'd like to hear from everybody. I, I, I don't know, I don't, how many acres of this eighteen-hundred-and-forty-seven or thirty-five do you represent?
I'd have to look, but it's...
I don't believe you, I believe you know.
Well, it's, you know, I think there was, well, one time there was, it's two forty right now. So, but we used to have another quarter on that, but that belongs to somebody else.
Okay, so you're at a six, you're at sixteen percent or seventeen percent? Okay, that's fine, thank you.
And there's, all the dealings that I've ever done with the Union SLU, they won't let you go any deeper and they won't let you go any bigger. It's got stayed exactly the same. Even if you got an eight inch going in there, if you got a fifteen coming up to it, they will not allow you to go any bigger. So I'm just saying, they're giving you an opportunity now, they might not tomorrow.
I, but I, I, yeah, I agree with that, yeah. So that's somewhat in support of what Joe wants.
Right.
I, I'm feeling...
And in the future, if you add more tile, that, this might not be big enough.
Right.
Well, and I, on that topic, I have had a number of conversations with Ed and I know that was their policy previously, but, um, I'd say even, I don't know if it was in conjunction with the reclassification that we did or before that, but in conversations I had with him at that time about the drainage laws and my understanding of them, um, there have been other, other instances of tile going into the SLU that they have a law shaker tile.
I did one this spring and they would not allow it.
The, the difference, their standing is between district facilities and private.
Yes.
They will allow larger district facilities, not private facilities.
And that is...
That is, that's their, that's where they changed their line to.
Yep.
Which there's really no difference because if the private facility is taxed in the DDA, we have the same right as a private as we do a trustee governed district. Because we're being taxed to that, so that's what's changed.
You're being revealed to the wrong body.
Yeah, but, but the difference there is you're taxed in the form of paying for costs of maintenance and for the last hundred-plus years, there hasn't been money spent to maintain that area um, in the form of dredging or anything else because the district hasn't been able to get in to do work. So, I mean, whether, whether you're paying for services incurred anywhere else on that lateral or that system is potentially irrelevant because the actual work that's being done has not occurred inside the Union SLU property. So, I mean, it...
That's because before, before this, we never assessed it. Now it's assessed, we could have you remove the dams and clean out that, that dredge if we wanted to, just because it's assessed now, to improve our drainage because it's part of the district. When you, when you reclassify and put that in the district, that gave us the right. And if you're assessed in the district, you have the right to tile into the district.
So that reclassification would have changed nothing for this district in this situation that we're talking about because that district facility outlet it at the same place, at the same boundary that it does now.
It, it, it outlets into DDA land too. We have a right to that outlet. And our right extends to some of the Union SLU wildlife refuge. Because we're taxed.
If, if I could, I think the, there, there are, there are pros and cons to what we're looking at here. It is, and, and I'm not, I'm not an attorney and I'm not a financial advisor, I'm not an accountant of any sort. I've told you what it would take in response to, to answer the petition. It's, it comes down to the districts, what it think, what the district thinks is an appropriate spend of its money. And if that's, i- if the increased outlet and everything that comes with it is deemed a, a, an economically viable course, then it's the trustee's determination of doing what is in the best interest of the district. Um, there's, there's a lot of other extenuating circumstances on this and a lot of conversations have been had about eighty in the Union SLU. A lot of which are, are tangent to this point and almost all of them, nothing can be done about based on this petition or from this district's point of view. Based on this petition or from this district's point of view. Is what's being asked and everything that goes along with it. Worthy of being done for the price. And it and it's that same question on the larger projects too, it's just when you're comparing. The. When you're comparing the administrative side of the costs to the construction costs. The ratio is, is oftentimes a lot more favorable in the construction cost. Whereas I see in this instance, you're going to get considerable, not more of the administrative, the. By that I mean the engineering and the the necessary report work. Just driven by the requirements of the statutes. But I'm not here to tell you whether or not that's a, I I can give you my opinion on what I think the the spread of that cost. That you'd like to get something better for more, but I'm not here to tell you what, which which one of those ways to go is right.
So I think another thing that hasn't been discussed in great detail so far that I look at is. The chart for coefficients that you had prepared Tyler, um, it's page two, if you wanna put it up on the. Screen. The capacity analysis that we have talked about is the one for submerged outlet, which you said at the time you did it, it was. Partially submerged with. A couple inches of water, half a third, whatever, is that correct?
Yep.
So, I think using that equation as a bare minimum baseline, I think is reasonable and appropriate. But also, if you compare that to the top example for a flowing pool. Outlet, you're already looking at one point three inches per day.
Well, and that's, for a, for a clarification, for what what you would be more. You would, you'd be closer if you compared it to the example immediately above it.
Which I was gonna mention that as well, which that is also point nine one inches per day. So, even if we looked at. Some sort of combination in between there, we probably already have an outlet to handle somewhere between a three-quarter and one-inch coefficient. Or close to, so considering the majority of our tile projects, we're doing now are anywhere from half inch. To three-quarters to one inch with several of them being in that three-quarter ballpark. Even well into the future, I think our outlet at current grade and elevation is probably relatively sufficient. To accommodate a larger improvement project.
It 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 would be, it would be toeing the line of it, yeah, yes, but that that is fair to say, that is, that is a fair assessment, yes.
We're already above the half inch, which is Iowa State's recommendation, but in all reality, from a practical standpoint, we're probably in the three-quarter ballpark.
With a repair.
With a repair.
You'd have to get that, if you got that thirty-six inch pipe where it could free flow.
Yep.
Which I think a guy can do that, he wouldn't have to replace any pipe. But it's gotta free flow, so you gotta remove the dirt far enough down to let our water, water there freely. Would the slough be open to that?
No, nothing, nothing is to be changed about that channel.
But even, even at the current standing.
Even as it is.
Our our capacity as is, even considering the worst case scenario of a submerged outlet. We're already talking point six-three as a bottom level for that, so if we're talking planning for future improvements. I mean, the current district facilities are at point one eight inches per day, so we already have more than three times the capacity at the outlet. Than we do anywhere else in the district.
Oh, you're not considering the private pipe that we put in.
We're considering district.
That's fine, but we have a private pipe that gives it one-inch drainage coefficient. Over three hundred acres, at least made three. That's already in there.
That's not a district consideration.
Well, it goes in that pipe, so it's restricted.
How do you wanna conclude today then?
I guess. My recommendation, if we are going forward in any type of process, I think there's a number of things that could be. Fine tuned and. Clarified to landowners of the district as well and confirming our process, so if we did that, I'd recommend continuing. Otherwise, I think the capacity that's currently provided to the district facilities is more than sufficient. And probably more than the bare minimum that we have highlighted as a focus and reference point. So, I think it's questionable at best if it's financially worth it to do it now, because I'm confident that. The district, the laws that govern district facilities would allow. A repair or improvement of, at the very least, this outlet and junction box that pertains to it well into the future. I do not see any issue with doing that five, ten, whatever years into the future with the current laws that we have in place. Now, maybe laws change, maybe policy changes, but that is the line that the slough has drawn of the difference between. Drainage district facilities entering their property versus private tile facilities, that is a distinction they have drawn. And I think it would be a. Tremendous legal challenge to. Figure out a solution different than what they have already agreed to. Especially in the form of district facilities, I think it'd be very difficult to say. We haven't maintained anything in the Union Slough property for district facilities for the last hundred years and now all of a sudden we want to. I think the precedence has been set that that's their land and. Control and I guess functionally for. The standpoint of sending equipment out there, w- we can't just send an excavator out there to dig a ditch because it's so swampy. You won't functionally be able to do it, so. Some of the exterior edges you could, but, um, and maybe the ditch in this particular area. Maybe if we said we were hoping to get it six inches lower, maybe they would entertain that, I don't know. But I think if we were to proceed with anything, I think there's a lot of boxes that need to be checked before making a decision to proceed. So, I don't know what everybody else has for thoughts, but that's mine, I guess.
I'm open to motions.
Do you guys have any thoughts or opinions?
But as much as I complain about government moves slow, and it does, I I guess, I I I guess I'd be open to and would make. I'd be open to the idea of continuing it, see it word of mouth and and if if you wanna spend whatever, another hundred dollars to send out. Send out notices again to see what the people want. You can only try so many times, though you can't, I mean. And then it's, then it's up to our best judgment, but I I prefer to hear from the people that own the ground.
And then Tyler, you said if that box was not able to be used, if it needed to be replaced, if that would increase the cost of that. Would it be good piece of information to give some alternative or contingency cost um, for this project? If that has to move forward in that direction?
Yes.
Yeah, I I think that would be important as well as a actual determination on whether reclassification would be required or not. And if it is, a cost is always included with that, because that's going to substantially contribute to the total.
I'll look at those two, at those two bits of information.
So, how far can we continue this legally or how 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 close or?
I don't know if there's any.
As long as you said.
Star rails on that.
A date, time.
And we, yeah, we can set that today or at a later meeting.
As, as long as. Right, but if you, if you set it at a later meeting, then you are obligated under the the notice requirements of the twenty. Twenty day. Notices from when it's sent and published, uh, if you set it today, at at this date, time. As long as you were comfortable in the timeframe of getting the additional notices out, there's no, you could set it as close as you wanted. My, I mean, for something like that, it'd be two weeks, I would think, that gets us right in on. The week of Thanksgiving, we have the best, but.
I would think maybe the ninth of December.
So, construction see done for this year.
Yeah, yeah.
So, as it, as it applies to next year, we're not delaying it, anything out that far, so pick a day and. And run, we can edit it for everybody.
Yeah, I guess if if we're comfortable with continuing, I'd make a motion to continue it to December ninth at nine AM. But still send notices. And I don't know if there's any other details we would need on that, is that any schedule conflicts there?
No, we're open, we're open.
Tyler, do you know, do you see anything, good?
I'm good.
Okay, then yeah, that's, that's my motion.
Okay, I'll second, motion by Staker, second by Whacker. For December ninth at nine AM. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, we'll call, we'll.
Haas?
Yes.
Garmin?
Yes.
Staker?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Motion carried, we will continue on the ninth of December.
Thank you all.
Thanks for coming in. And then we'll need a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I knew we wanted to get on the drainage, so I wanted to talk about the agenda.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I I hope that that.
Go ahead.
I don't recall, so I hope I didn't miss anything, have we had discussions about Isaac's letter to us if it regards to the eight of this?
On the agenda next week.
Did you say that?
No.
Okay, I'm, okay, so I. Okay, very good. So that's what I wanted to.
I asked Annie, but on the agenda next week.
Okay, guys, and then I visit your question. I've been calling about Beaver Dam and an area where, um, it's not a drainage district. How do we handle that?
That just comes out of the supervisor fund that we, that we set for Beaver.
That's for Beaver Dam.
Oh, you're not a Beaver Dam, I'm sorry, yeah.
Is it, is it affecting the water flow?
Well, he says it's creating some harm, some.
He said.
Like it's bad, it's got water and fresh ice on the outlet, so that can still be. It's kind of the same conversation that earlier, if it's affecting the district facilities. So.
For right now, all they said is he should get someone to track the beavers.
Tracking.
Goodness, that's the first step, if they're not tracked, they're just gonna build it again.
Yep. But.
No, I hear you, I hear you.
I'm not here to sell anything.
And it's affecting the water.
I'm here to do what is.
I just wanted to make sure that I.
Yeah, good question, yeah.
Um, and I did on drainage as well, since we were on the insurance, I didn't bring that, but.
Appreciate it.
On D D ninety, have a good one, we'll talk to you later. Thanks for coming down. Um, on D D ninety lap one, we've had some correspondence with the railroad recently where they. Are agreeing to let us do the repairs under the railroad with an open cut, but. In conjunction with that, and they're saying there's no fee for this permit, but then tied with that is their response that they're not willing to pay anything for the repairs. Within their right of way, which is inconsistent with Iowa code, that was recently passed last year, the year before, so. We are having some conversations kind of with IDDA, um, they're turning this on, it's a sweeping. And I will probably talk with her sometime into beginning part of December, but.
Thanks, Matt.
Currently, the cost estimate, and I don't remember off the top of my head exactly, but I wanna say the current cost estimate was about twenty thousand to do. A repair digging right through the railroad track, since it's a bridge, it'd be fairly cheap and easy, but. There are other, plenty of other situations, especially in the north end of the Sioux County, where we do not have a. Bridge that we could dig under, so we do, yeah, board for like setting precedents on other issues. And those costs get very expensive very quickly, so I think it's just, I guess, for right now, it's just something I. Bring everybody's attention to, that's been a project I've been trying to get. Movement on for probably the better part of three years, um, maybe four. After the redistricting happened, it was in my territory then, it was Rogers previously, but, um. It's been a slow process with the railroad and, I mean, getting to where we're at now is kind of an evental, but. Um, getting them to agree to pay is gonna be difficult, so I think. We basically have the option of deciding whether we want to just pay it out of district funds and try to scoop those from the railroad. After the fact, or. Other courses of action, so we may have a discussion with our attorney in the future or something, but that has been a. Project over half over the last couple of years, so. Just wanted to, I guess, give a quick heads up on that.
Okay.
And. I think that's all I had, all I remembered right now.
Okay. Motion adjourned.
So moved.
Motion by Staker, seconded by Garmin, did you have something else?
This letter, is this something you've attended in the past, this district two?
Oh.
For ISA.
For ISA.
I know it's not ISA, not ISA.
Supervisor.
Just supervise your district two, I mean, they have a.
The panel will be.
Forward.
We have an email on it, yeah.
It does come through for the fourth? Yeah.
Yeah.
Won't see anything here, it says ISA will speak, but.
Yeah, that's, that's the.
Districts.
That's the district level of ISA, so on the supervisor affiliate, you have different districts around the state and then each of them. Select leadership and that goes to the ISA board of directors and.
So have you gone to this in the past?
I've attended a couple, but most of the time, they happen to schedule them on the same day as IDDA, so a lot of times we had conflicts with that. If you can't attend it, you sure could, um.
How many, I joked, we joked a week or two ago about how many different associations and and things are necessary to. I mean, I'm, I'm gonna crucify this, but I see this as a money raising thing for ISA and nothing but, but.
No.
A lot of the time you pay.
Well, we can talk about it, okay, we do have, we do have a motion and second to adjourn, so. A discussion on a journey, if not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries, we're adjourned at ten forty-eight.
I've got the canvas.
Yeah, can I use?
Okay.
Can I ask?
Yep. Josh, it's all right, could you run the meeting for this part and I'm gonna come back?
It won't take very long.
It won't take very long?
Mm-hmm.
Like, you're talking.
Just to redo them, so I guess.
Talking fifteen minutes, half hour?
Fifteen minutes, I'd say fifteen minutes.
Okay.
And then signing everything.
Signing's what's gonna take the longest, but you.
Yeah, you. Well.
So, you don't, I mean.
Okay.
How fast would you be back if you leave?
No, I I'd have to come back at like two.
Oh, yeah, we.
We'll be done.
Let's, I'd say hammer and brew it, but it depends on how long.
Can I sign them later?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Depends how long the break people take.
Okay. Go ahead. I I thought we were gonna do the canvas at nine thirty, so.
Yeah, I, I'm not surprised.
I I have to be home by noon at the latest, isn't ideal, but.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Curious if um you guys said if we wanna make a plan or something like that on. Just time to talk to move forward, if that's even i- in in your interest or or how I can, how I can help.
I don't even know what. Uh I need to talk to somebody, I don't even know what uh, I know it got mentioned at that meeting, well, you need to go talk to. The Board of Supervisors, but I'm not sure what our process is. Move forward, we're gonna have to, I'm gonna have to find some more information out as far as what is our role moving forward here and.
Yep.
Being that they denied your permit. I I'm not sure what what the process is going from there.
Yeah.
No problem, can I make a suggestion?
Well, you can say whatever you want to.
Well, I mean.
Yeah.
Um, so we've worked with, what we heard from the from from planning zoning, right?
Yep.
We heard from them was that they didn't feel comfortable making a decision because there's no ordinance and they wanted direction from the supervisors.
Yep.
So uh where we've done this in past counties, like Lee County, for example, uh where they have no zoning at all.
Right.
So and no ordinances, so we practically went to them with a joint development agreement, much like what we've got, what I sent, uh, B D email to you. Um, and just said, look, you don't have a. Guidelines for this, so let's propose some, so that everybody feels comfortable and that you feel you feel taken care of. And so my my proposal was if the supervisors were would be entertain would entertain that development agreement, that that would then help give direction to. To the zoning, uh to help them feel like they've had direction. So.
So.
Well, did, was that just sent to you? That development?
It was the to and planning's and the county engineer.
I think Doug got it too.
Okay, um.
And and I don't wanna conduct business in an open uh uh.
Yeah, I would say.
Why anybody thinking?
I would say that probably should be sent to all of us on the board and review and talk about it and add a later agenda, you know, I won't be back for a couple of weeks, but. I guess whatever, but I would, the process, I guess that's what I'd recommend, giving everybody a chance to look over it for a little while and.
Yeah.
Review it at a future meeting.
Okay.
I don't know.
Y- yeah.
Do you have any specific timeline you're looking for?
So.
Besides yesterday?
Well, so we went uh, we went to the state and got the state permit for this. And as a part of that, the state requires a public, a public hearing, a public meeting, so we went to the state and had that public meeting and and. And everybody had feedback, right, so there was a chance of the public to to chime in already.
I mean, I think most of us were at the information, we wanna.
No.
Yeah.
So we.
Yeah, uh, but, I mean, I ideally, we'd love to be able to to have it done by the end of.
Everybody has to say.
An agreement or?
Yeah, those.
Oh, he'll sign them.
Well, to have a a permit, so as as Doug said, we could go put those twenty-five barrels of concrete in by the end of the month. We'd we'd like to put in that ton, the that concrete by the end of the year, we need twenty to twenty-five days to do that. So it's coming to.
Including whatever Mother Nature throws at us, or?
No, they're gonna work through that, so. Yeah, so I mean, ideally, if we were able to to have something by the end of November. Um, we're willing to, we're here to to do anything, so. So I just, I don't know, like what you guys had and I didn't want. Or.
Yeah, I mean, we won't be able to really discuss too much now, but. I guess. Food for thought. I'd say send it to everybody on the board if you can and.
Yep, we'll do that right away.
Go from there with an agenda item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, really appreciate it.
You ready?
Still recording or a continuance of that, I have a separate one?
Right.
Okay.
All right, we will uh. Call the next meeting to order, uh this is for the first tier county canvas of votes for city school election that was held on Tuesday, November fourth. Uh we'll go ahead and call meeting to order at ten fifty-five. And we will skip over the pledge of allegiance, if that is okay with you guys or unless you want to do that again.
We already did it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. So move on to discussion decision approval of the the agenda. We have a motion.
I'm glad to make a motion, but I have no idea what this agenda is about.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Stecker, second by Garmin, uh all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay, motion carries unanimous. Next on the agenda is the discussion review, the abstract of votes.
Okay, so I will read through them um each, um and then we'll have you approve them after they're read. So Cassisouth County, Iowa, we the undersigned members of the County Board of Canvassers hereby certify the following to be true and correct abstract of the votes cast in this county. At the twenty twenty-five city school election held on Tuesday, November fourth, twenty twenty-five, as shown by the tally list returned from the several election precincts. City of Algonah Mayor, Rick Murphy, six hundred and forty-seven votes, scattering nineteen votes for a total of six hundred and sixty-six votes. We therefore declare Rick Murphy to be duly elected for the city office of City of Algonah Mayor. City of Algonah City Council Ward One, Rodney J. Davis, seventy-six votes, Carl Westling, seventy-nine votes, scattering five votes for a total of a hundred and sixty votes. We therefore declare Carl Westling to be duly elected for the office of City of Algonah City Council Ward One. City of Algonah City Council Ward Three, scattering nineteen votes, Brad Hoover, thirteen votes for a total of thirty-two votes. We therefore declare Brad Hoover to be duly elected for the office of City of Algonah City Council Ward Three. City of Algonah City Council at Large, scattering sixty-six votes, Brad Hoover, two hundred and thirteen votes, Josh Colehouse, thirty-four votes. Total three hundred and thirteen votes. We therefore declare Brad Hoover to be duly elected for the office of City of Algonah City Council at Large. City of Bancroft City Council at Large, Randy Greve, thirty-five votes, James Luft, seventy-six votes, scattering twenty-eight votes, Tim Goshi, fifty-five votes. Carol Bernhardt, thirty-six votes, Amanda McDonald, twenty-four votes for a total of two hundred and fifty-four votes. We therefore declare James Luft to be duly elected for this office of City of Bancroft City Council at Large. Tim Goshi to be duly elected for the office of City of Bancroft City Council at Large and Carol Bernhardt to be duly elected for the office. Of City of Bancroft City Council at Large. That was three. City of Burt Mayor, Randy Wood, one hundred and thirty-five votes, scattering one vote for a total of a hundred and six thirty-six votes. We therefore declare Randy Wood to be duly elected for the office of City of Burt Mayor. City of Burt City Council at Large, Connie Cato, fifty-two votes, Richard Richter, ninety-five votes, Christopher Myrie, ninety-six votes. Harold R. Laubert, seventy votes, scattering zero votes for a total of two hundred and sixty votes. We therefore declare Richard Richter to be duly elected for the office of City of Burt City Council at Large and Christopher Myrie. To be duly elected for the office of City of Burt City Council at Large. City of Burt City Council at Large to fill a vacancy, Megan Yonkey, seventy-seven votes, Perry Dykhouse, fifty-seven votes. Scattering zero votes for a total of a hundred and thirty-four votes. Megan Yonkey to be duly elected for the office of City of Burt City Council at Large to fill a vacancy. City of Fenton City Council at Large, scattering ten votes, Daniel Ulfers, forty votes, Lisa Talbot, thirty-seven votes, Andrea Isabram, thirty-three votes. For a total of a hundred and twenty votes. We therefore declare Daniel Ulfers to be duly elected for the office of City of Fenton City Council at Large. And Lisa Talbot to be duly elected for the office of City of Fenton City Council at Large. And Andrea Isabram to be duly elected for the office of City of Fenton City Council at Large. City of Lakota City Council at Large, Tanner T. Wierenga, forty-four votes, Brittany Price, forty-three votes. Scattering seven votes, Paul Hagadorn, twenty-one votes for a total of one hundred and fifty votes, a hundred and fifteen votes. We therefore declare Tanner T. Wierenga to be duly elected for the office of City of Lakota City Council at Large. Brittany Price to be duly elected for the office of City of Lakota City Council at Large. And Paul Hagadorn to be duly elected for the office of City of Lakota City Council at Large. City of Leadyard Mayor, Robert M. Gilbertson, twenty-six votes, scattering zero votes for a total of twenty-six votes. We therefore declare Robert M. Gilbertson to be duly elected for the office of City of Leadyard Mayor. City of Leadyard City Council at Large, Jeremy Thompson, twenty-six votes, scattering one vote, Royce Valvic, seventeen votes. Total of forty-four votes. We therefore declare Jeremy Thompson to be duly elected for the office of City of Leadyard City Council at Large. And Royce Valvic to be duly elected for the office of City of Leadyard City Council at Large. City of Leadyard City Council at Large to fill a vacancy, John Churnus, twenty-six votes, scattering zero votes for a total of twenty-six votes. We therefore declare John Churnus to be duly elected for the office of City of Leadyard City Council at Large to fill a vacancy. City of Lone Rock Mayor, Jerry Thompson, twenty-five votes, Nicholas Harmon, fifteen votes. Scattering seven votes for a total of forty-seven votes. We therefore declare Jared Jerry Thompson to be duly elected for the office of City of Lone Rock Mayor. City of Lone Rock City Council at Large, Bill Helton, thirty-three votes, Randall Wayne Ballinger, forty-one votes, a scattering of two votes for a total of seventy-six votes. We therefore declare Bill Hel- Helton to be duly elected for the office of City of Lone Rock City Council at Large. And Randall Wayne Ballinger to be duly elected for the office of City of Lone Rock City Council at Large. City of Laverne Mayor, Kevin Mickey McPeak, thirty-two votes, scattering three votes, total of thirty-five votes. City of Laverne City Council at Large, Cassidy Bitsum, thirty votes, scattering five votes, Jean Frieders, twelve votes for a total of forty-seven votes. City of Sway City Mayor, Troy Langford, a hundred and fifty-one votes, Wendy Zielinski, seventy-one votes. A scattering of two votes for a total of two hundred and twenty-four votes. We therefore declare Troy Langford to be duly elected for the office of City of Sway City Mayor. City of Sway City City Council at Large, Randy Purdue, a hundred and forty-one votes, Andy Donnelly, a hundred and two votes, Deb Johnson, a hundred and ten votes. Tyler. Cunlee Potter, six votes, Sarah Dale Anderson, sixty votes, a scattering of zero vo- zero votes. Wendy Zielinski, eleven votes for a total of four hundred and thirty votes. We therefore declare Randy Purdue to be duly elected for the office of City of Sway City City Council at Large. And Deb Johnson to be duly elected for the office of City of Sway City City Council at Large. City of Titanca City Council at Large, Katie Prossman, fifty-one votes, scattering three votes, Tyler Smith, forty votes for a total of ninety-four votes. We therefore declare Katie Prossman to be duly elected for the office of City of Titanca City Council at Large and Tyler Smith to be duly elected. For the office of City of Titanca City Council at Large. City of Wesley Mayor, Craig Florrie, a hundred votes, scattering thirteen votes for a total of a hundred and thirteen votes. We therefore declare Craig Florrie to be duly elected for the office of City of Wesley Mayor. City of Wesley City Council at Large, Melissa Johnson, fifty-two votes, Caitlin Rosenmeyer, seventy-two votes, Joella Leiter, thirty-seven votes. Paige Grine, sixty-eight votes and a scattering of one vote for a total of two hundred and thirty votes. We therefore declare Caitlin Rosenmeyer to be duly elected for the office of City of Wesley City Council at Large. And Paige Grine to be duly elected for the office of City of Wesley City Council at Large. City of West Bend Mayor to fill a vacancy, Andrew Burkler, zero votes, Bobby Gerhart Bauer, four votes, Randy Carlson, one vote. Scattering one vote for a total of six votes. City of West Bend City Council at Large, Grant Gerhart, six votes, Chris Newton, four votes, Blake Banworth, one vote, a scattering of zero votes for a total of a. Of eleven votes. City of Widmore Mayor, Daniel J. Albert, fifty-six votes, scattering three votes for a total of fifty-nine votes. We therefore declare Daniel J. Albert to be duly elected for the office of City of Widmore Mayor. City of Widmore City Council at Large, Stuart A. Simonsen, fifty-eight votes, Carla Walker, forty-five votes. Scattering eight votes for a total of a hundred and eleven votes. We therefore declare Stuart A. Simonsen to be duly elected for the office of City of Widmore City Council at Large. And Carla Walker to be duly elected for the office of City of Widmore City Council at Large. Algonah School District, or Algonah School Director at Large, Jay Limbaugh, nine hundred and fifty-one votes. Rodney Davis, nine hundred and fifty-one votes. Lan- Lanny Mitchell, nine hundred and twenty-three votes, a scattering of forty-seven votes. John Emswiler, two hundred and eighteen votes for a total of three thousand and ninety votes. North Cassisouth School District One, School Director District One, Phil Elbers, three hundred and twenty-eight votes. Scattering five votes for a total of three hundred and thirty-three votes. We therefore declare Philip Elbers to be duly elected for the office of North Cassisouth School Director District One. North Cassisouth School Dir- Director District Two, Megan Heatland, three hundred and twenty-four votes, scattering. Eleven votes for a total of three hundred and thirty-five votes. We therefore declare Megan Heatland to be duly elected for the office of North Cassisouth School Director District Two. North Iowa School Director District One, Robin Catwick, forty-nine votes, scattering zero votes for a total of forty-nine votes. North Iowa School Director District Three, scattering three votes for a total of three votes. North Iowa School Director at Large, Jared Allen Virgits, seventeen votes, Kyle Van Hoof, twenty-six votes. Rachel Webin, thirty-eight votes, a scattering of zero votes for a total of eighty-one votes. North Union School Director District One, scattering thirteen votes for a total of thirteen votes. North Union School Director District Two, Arthur W. Pixler, ninety-three votes, scattering two votes for a total of ninety-five votes. North Union School Director at Large, Ethan Jensen, fifty votes, Jean Miller, forty-eight votes, scattering one vote for a total of ninety-nine votes. Twin Rivers School Director at Large, Kristen Olson, zero votes, Courtney McCullough, zero votes, scattering zero votes for a total of zero votes. West Bend Mallard Director. West Bend Mallard School Director at Large, Dave Bruhlman, twenty-seven votes, Lisa Trub, twenty-five votes. Christopher Monte, thirty-one votes for a scatter and a scattering of forty-one votes for a total of eighty-seven votes. Iowa Lakes Community College Director District Seven, Robert Jennings, seven hundred and seventy-three votes, scattering five votes. For a total of seven hundred and seventy-eight votes. North Iowa Area Community College Director District One, David A. Stephens Junior, three votes, scattering zero votes for a total of three votes. Twin River School Public Measure K R, yes, zero votes, no, zero votes, total of zero votes. West Bend Mallard School Public Measure R E, yes, thirty votes, no, four votes for a total of thirty-four votes. Iowa Central Community College Public Measure V T, yes, zero votes, no, zero votes for a total of zero votes. That's it.
All right.
Now, now I need a drink or two.
I'll move to approve the abstract of votes.
Second.
A motion by Stecker and second by Garmin to approve the abstract of votes, uh do we need a roll call vote for that one or?
All in favor?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous.
I've moved to approve the election plans. I move to approve the election claims.
Um, yeah, uh, the Stecker motion to approve the election claims, do we have a second? Seconded by Haas. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous.
Do you wanna sign before you adjourn, or do you wanna adjourn and then sign?
I'll adjourn.
Motion by Stecker to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Haas. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries, we are adjourned at eleven ten.